Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting tonight, which is adjusted to be on a Monday night. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 8th, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the day of assembly and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Ms. Ogden.
Here.
The President and I do.
Here. Now, I'd like to call upon former Councilman-at-large, Richard Sun, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Richard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the note items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email copy to the City Clerk's Office at R-Licatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you're using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or in need of professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of September 4th, 2018?
So moved.
I move to approve those minutes. Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Great. Moving on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out tonight. As many of you know, we have new parking payment kiosks that have been installed in downtown Summit. To help manage the transition, I worked with the Communications Office and Hometown TV to create an instructional video on how to operate the new payment kiosks. A link to that video is available on the city's website at cityofsummit.org. It's not complicated. You just need to take a little time. Once you do it first time, then it's okay. My next meet-the-mayor event, which is usually at some kind, at either a cafe, someplace in town, this time, on Sunday, September 23rd, at 9:00 a.m., I'll be at a booth at the Summit Farmers Market from 9:00 to 10:30. So it's an opportunity for residents to come and talk about whatever they want. So I'm looking forward to seeing lots of folks there. The Mayor's Forum on Diversity is scheduled to meet on Monday, September 24th, at 8:00 a.m. in the Whitman Community Room upstairs. The forum holds quarterly meetings, and anyone from the public is welcome to attend. And then, lastly, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad is mailing out next week their annual appeal. The squad is there for us all the time, and they don't receive any tax dollars from the city. They, in fact, save the city millions of dollars, and we are very grateful to them. So when this mailing hits your mailbox, please don't immediately put it in the circular file, but take a look at it and make a contribution, no matter how small. These are a great group of human beings who help us constantly in this community, and we're really very grateful to them. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. The City Administrator, Michael Rogers. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. The Department of Community Services will complete its micro-resurfacing project on Wednesday, September 19th, weather permitting. Residents will be notified, and information will be posted on the city website under "Construction Updates." Within the next few weeks, Big Belly Recycling and Trash Solar Compacting Units will be installed at the corner of Beechwood Road and Union Place, at Glen Side Field, and Springfield Avenue Promenade. These units were purchased with Clean Communities, Recycling Enhancement, and Recycling Tonnage Grant monies. For more information and a video tutorial on how to use the new trash and recycling compactors, that will be available soon on our city website. Regarding the Broad Street redevelopment area, the city is continuing to engage the development community with a request for preliminary concept development plans. That is now available on the homepage of the city website. Development teams are invited to share design parameters for strategic development of the Broad Street West area. Following review and vetting of developer concept proposals, the city will schedule another community meeting to share aspects of the submitted concept plans and solicit citizen input and feedback. And finally, another reminder, the Summit Board of Health is asking for feedback on how it can improve the health of its citizens. The survey takes approximately 15 minutes to complete, and all answers are completely confidential. Please visit cityofsummit.org to take the survey. That's all I have for the statement, Council President. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention one more thing. There was a microburst in the area of Division and Valley View that knocked out some power today, tonight. Crews are on-site, and it's, there were downed trees, no reported injuries. One tree fell on a house, but the family is being helped, and no one was hurt. But, so, just in case, there's about 500 houses that are without power, but it's, crews are on-site, and they're working on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I want to add is that the next Council on the Road, which is our listening session, is going to be on September 26th at the high school library at 7:00 p.m. For those of you who don't know about it, what we do, I'm there, the mayor's there, and two members of council. This time, it'll be Marjorie Fox and Beth Little. We listen to questions, take questions, try to give some answers, if we have the answers, readily available. Otherwise, we basically have homework assignments, and we follow up with city staff to try to see which things we can try to resolve as quickly as possible. So I encourage folks to come out and visit us. It's a very informal, unlike council, with all this formality, it's a very informal sit-down, talking amongst fellow residents. Okay? With that, we have a ceremonial award regarding Constitution Week by the mayor for the Daughters of the American Revolution. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Whereas September 17, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 9-1-5 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through '23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Norah, your greatest mayor of the City of Summit, to hear about proclaim the week of September 17 through '23, 2018, as Constitution Week. And I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I appear on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 17th day of September in the year 2018. Thank you. I'm so excited.
I know. I'm so excited about the proclamation. I just want to point out today's actually is 17th. We all have been here a few weeks before.
It's the actual day. It's the actual day. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys should remember this.
Thank you very much. And tonight, we have two presentations from our engineering department. Aaron Schreger and Rick Mathias is here, Paul Cascay is here. So the first of those two presentations, the first one is on the Wallace Road Improvement Update. So Aaron, Rick, you guys, whoever's doing it, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Rick Mathias. I'm the Assistant City Engineer. Obviously, I work with Aaron Schreger as the City Engineer at DCS, that'd be Director, and Paul Cascay is the Director at DCS. So we'll be doing a quick presentation on Wallace Road, cap improvement project, and drainage improvement options. The first half will be more historical, just general information. Second half will be the various options that we've come up with so far. Wallace Road is located in the north end of the municipality, adjacent to Route 24 and the Canoeberg Country Club. It's 24 feet wide on average, 2,000 feet long. Most of the homes on the south end were built in the 1960s as part of the Wallace Road at South Gate Development. Homes on the north end, near Route 24, most of them were built earlier. One of them was built less than a decade ago. Apparently, there's 16 total homes on the entire flank, along with the Canoeberg Country Club across the street. We have various utilities on that street. Underground, the city has storm and sanitary. PSCNG has gas. New Jersey American Water has a 6, 8, 12, and a 24-inch water main. The 12 and the 24 serve a good portion of the municipality. Overhead, we have phone, cable, electric, and various other communication wires. As you all know, Wallace Road was included in the 2018 cap improvement plan. We had a public meeting on May 30th of this year. We had various residents come out and discuss the project. The bond was introduced at the May 15th council meeting, and it was heard at the June 6th council meeting, where again, you all had various residents come out and discuss the project with you all. Principally, the flooding, right? So we have reports dating back as far as 1967 of flooding on that street in our street file. It's been included in our city drainage assessment report since the report was created, just, I believe, over a decade ago. So the flooding there is not new to any of us. It's been a problem for some time. The area specifically, the north block, the dead-end block towards Route 24, has been part of the flood zone since FEMA issued the first flood map in 1977. This is the map here. That's the location. This is a zoomed-in portion, a zoomed-in portion of the map showing the original Zone A flood zone for that block. It currently still is in the flood zone. FEMA redid the maps in 2006 and reissued the maps. These are still the current maps for the City of Summit. Wallace Road is right in that circle there. So it's still under the same flood zone rules as it was when it was originally created in 1977. So this is our aerial view of Wallace Road with all the properties and, obviously, Canoeberg Country Club. The circled area is the culvert where the majority of the flooding occurs currently. And then, the other circle is the storm sewer. It's a 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe that was installed as part of the South Gate Development in 1960. The culvert was installed in 1963. This is kind of a poor scan, but this is the overall site plan for the culvert. It was installed, again, in 1963 by Union County. They estimated 440 acres of drainage area to pass through that culvert, which is pretty significant. It's a large area. We've done our own analysis citywide, not specifically for this project, but just as an engineering study of all the drainage basins in the city. And Wallace Road falls under Drainage Basin J, which is 387 acres. So it's literally less than 440 than the culvert was originally designed for. However, the majority of Drainage Basin J still goes through that culvert. So 334 acres passes through that culvert currently. We've also ran calculations for all of our drainage basins. This one's also a little bit difficult, but hopefully you all can see. Drainage Basin J ranges anywhere from a two-year to 100-year storm, from 800 cubic feet per second of water to 1,700 cubic feet of water per second. To put that into context, an Olympic-sized swimming pool is 88,000 cubic feet of water. So in a 10-year storm, you have 1,277, is our estimate, cubic feet per second. So you can fill an Olympic-sized pool in about 2, 3 minutes. So it's significant. Now, this is for the entire Drainage Basin J. If you look at the 334 acres, it's about 85% of the overall drainage area, so that ranges from 700 to 1,400 cubic feet per second. So I want to highlight here the 24-inch, you want to kind of circle back a little bit, 24-inch sewer that was installed as part of the South Gate Development. So in a 10-year storm, you have 1,277, is our estimate, cubic feet per second. So you can fill an Olympic-sized pool in about 2, 3 minutes. So it's significant. Now, this is for the entire Drainage Basin J. If you look at the 334 acres, it's about 85% of the overall drainage area, so that ranges from 700 to 1,400 cubic feet per second. So I want to highlight here the 24-inch, you want to kind of circle back a little bit, 24-inch sewer that was installed as part of the South Gate Development, mainly because the flows that are going to the culvert are the flows that are going to the culvert. We're not going to reroute the entire drainage basin. It's nearly impossible. The culvert is also owned by Union County. We don't control it. So we decided to focus mainly on this 24-inch storm sewer. That 24-inch storm sewer captures 53 acres of the overall drainage basin, captures most of the new development from the 1960s, considering it's still new, and a good portion of the golf course. So just kind of, just to summarize those numbers, because they threw a lot at you, right? So Drainage Basin J is where it's at right now, 387 acres. Approximately 334 of those acres go through that culvert. We want to take out 53. That's the easiest and most effective way to reduce flooding in that culvert. Now, I'll also mention the golf course pond, because there's a separate project that my office is working on with DEP and a separate consulting to replace the spillway at the golf course pond. So the golf course pond ranges anywhere from 1 to 3 feet deep. It's 1.7 acres in surface area. Doesn't provide a lot of storage. That is equivalent about 3 Olympic-sized pools.
Can I ask you a quick question? When you say golf course pond, you're talking about the municipal golf course?
Yes.
Not Canoeberg.
The municipal golf course pond.
Right. I just want to make sure.
So it doesn't provide a lot of storage, because it's small. But the gate provides an opportunity for us to alleviate some of the flooding. So with work that we want to do to remove the 53 acres and work that'll continue with the spillway, we feel this will have a huge improvement on Wallace Road. So after the bond was heard and approved, we went out and got surveyed for Wallace Road and this surrounding area. We looked at various options. We analyzed the survey, and we started putting some work down and some numbers down. Now, as engineers, we look at all options, right? So we've got the basic no-build option to the extravagant, you know, outsized option of property acquisition. Mainly, most of the options are storm sewer additions, which is what makes the most sense. Again, the culvert is county-owned, so we're not proposing any improvements to the culvert right now. The golf course, and by this golf course, I mean Canoeberg Country Club. They already have several large storage ponds, so there's not much more that they can do as far as storage. And it's just basically a highly impervious site. Golf courses, although they're green, grass, great landscaping, they, they're impervious. They're meant, and they're designed in a way to shed water quickly, because people want to play with it. So the equivalent of the golf course is essentially a residential zone as far as drain is concerned. So we're not going to get much help there. It's the end of the book on that one. Mill and paving for the street is still anticipated. That would be a part of the overall project for the drainage improvements. That would include inlet upgrades, sanitary sewer upgrades as necessary, curb repairs, and then, obviously, the mill and pavement. So let's get into the options a little bit, because that's really where the meat is. Again, option 1 is no build, but it's not really no build. It would be mill and pave, the inlet upgrades, storm sewer or sanitary sewer upgrades as necessary, and curb repairs. Option number 2, we're calling it the Rose Lane upgrades. So at our public hearing, we heard from some residents that there was a significant amount of water coming down Wallace Road. You guys can all see the map, right? And then, sheet flowing across towards Rose Lane, and then going down driveways, and on several occasions, actually going over the curb and onto the lawn, and then into their yard.
Sorry.
Yes.
Can you show us, where's the place where we saw the video of just the water just?
So that is going through here.
Right through here.
That essentially started down here, and the video trails up the hill this way.
Okay.
So this, if you see this little arrow coming in here, that is the majority of those 53 acres that are coming into the storm sewer. And that's where that, at the end of the video, where all the water was cascading into the curb.
Right. Was right there.
Yes.
So that's downhill, going to the left is going downhill.
Yes. Going to the right is downhill.
Oh, going to the right.
So going towards the bodies of water here. This is, this right here is the lowest point. This is the culvert.
Okay.
So all the water is essentially coming this way, and then down. And then, all the water from here is going this way, and then into the culvert.
But the worst flooding where it was hitting the neighbors, going to their yards, was...
This is here.
Oh, was there?
Because then the stream goes through these four properties here.
Okay. Thank you.
So option 2 is to add and extend a storm sewer on Rose Lane. We have an existing storm sewer on Canoeberg Parkway that connects to a culvert, an existing culvert here. So we would tap into that storm sewer, run a pipe and several inlets along the driveways, and capture all of the water that's sheet flowing onto Rose Lane, and then going onto the private property. This is ballpark numbers. We haven't really sharpened our pencils yet, but this would add an additional 55,000 to the overall project. This one, we're calling Rose Lane diversion. So what we're doing here is we're going to install and upgrade the storm sewer at the Rose Lane-Wallace Road intersection. We're going to run a storm sewer down Rose Lane and into a separate direct connection to the culvert on Canoeberg Parkway. So what's the difference between this one and the other? This one would capture those 53 acres of water that's coming down the hill on Wallace Road, and it would redirect it. So typically, those 53 acres of drainage are coming down the hill this way, and then making their way directly into the culvert here. This would bypass that and send it further downstream. Now, this isn't, this isn't a slam dunk. There's more studying that needs to be done, because we need to see what the effects are upstream, and how is that going to affect downstream going toward our golf course? So there's still more studying that needs to be done, but it's an option. There's also additional DEP permitting that's needed for this, because we're now creating, we would create a new connection to the culvert. We estimate that would be about 105,000 additional. Option 4 is grading reconfigurations. So this is the culvert end of Wallace Road. So this is at that end. Route 24 is over here. So what we plan to do with this option is essentially change grades of the road and of the surrounding area to prevent the water from going onto the road. We would curve both sides of the road. We would adjust the curve height, the road height, and then between the curve and the Canoeberg Country Club property line, we would add landscaping to prevent runoff from going onto the road. So essentially, we're controlling the runoff, and we're holding it back. Now, this requires a significant amount of engineering, and we would have to, again, look into it deeper. We would have to work with Canoeberg Country Club, because we need to know how that impacts their infrastructure. So there's an upstream effect that we have to really look into. We estimate about 157,000, $157,000 for that option. Option 5 is storage. So right here, this little cluster there, that is exactly where that water was cascading over the curb, and that is the entry point of the 53 acres of additional flow. What we would do here is essentially size a underground storage pipe beneath the road or even beneath this typical ground behind the curb, and we would store water. The design would have an outflow structure that would allow the system to fill up and then slowly release the water. Now, it's not like holding water at the municipal golf course pond. This is only holding the 53 acres, not holding the 334. So it's a little bit more dual. Now, the difficulty with this one is we have a lot of underground utilities, going back to, you know, one of the first lines. So, but if we can do it maybe behind the curb, it's an option. And this is also very dependent on percolation rates, because we want some of that water to percolate into the ground. So we have to do some soil analysis as well. This estimate is about 400,000. Option 6 is heavy construction. So we would take those 53 acres, and instead of sending them or keeping them on Wallace Road at all, we would have to acquire some easements, do some private properties on Wallace Road and Canoeberg Parkway, and divert a storm sewer down Iris Road, and then out to River Road, and then connecting it to an existing culvert that's on River Road, also owned by Union County, that then drains to the Seaford. So this is not a particularly fun option, and it's fun maybe construction-wise, but not, not as far as everything else and the preparation for it, because there's a lot of costs, and there's going to be a lot of cost run-ups for acquiring the easements. So we estimate that to be approximately 800,000. And this one would also require additional DEP permitting, because we're connecting a brand-new connection to a culvert. Option 7, the least realistic option, but an option as an engineer nonetheless, is property acquisition, and there are five properties along the stream, starting from the culvert on Wallace Road, going towards the culvert on Canoeberg Parkway, and then eventually going to our pond, which is over here. We estimate that would be anywhere from 3 to 6 million dollars just on property acquisition. There would then be additional work needed to create some storage to reduce flooding there as well. So moving forward, we're going to continue to analyze these options. We're going to have to dig deeper in them. We just got back our survey this summer, and we started working on it right away. Most likely, it'll be a combination of these options of storage, diversion, and grading. Those, that's the most realistic. Mill and paving, as I mentioned before, would move forward with this project. We're not, we're not looking to separate it out. At some point, we'll need input either from council or from the Public Works Committee, especially if the costs increase. We'll have to work with you guys on that. And we'll continue, obviously, to listen to homeowners. We'll continue to monitor storms. If everything goes well, we would look to break ground summer and fall of, summer or fall of 2019.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
One question you said about the city's going to do work on the pond at the golf course. What exactly is it planning on doing?
So the city's working with the consultants to replace the spillway. It's essentially, it acts like a dam, but it's not technically a dam, it's a spillway. So the consultants prepared plans for replacement, and they've now submitted those plans to DEP for review, and we're waiting to hear back. I think Aaron could probably provide more information if needed. He's more on top of that one than I am.
Thank you, Council President. Rick, we're looking at a design, it's more of a horseshoe that it would have, and the intent of the design for the golf course spillway would be to allow more water to flow out in routine storms. Now, you have the flows Rick had mentioned earlier, obviously, all backed it off, but this for the lesser storms will absolutely allow more water to freely flow through the Seaford, while reducing some of the log jams behind. So it would also have the gate or the valve that we have now, but doesn't function properly. So for larger predicted storms, we could get a permit to lower the levels of the pond to assist with some storage. Would include that. It also includes the back bridge, golf course bridge, I don't have the name, but would raise that some, again, to also permit just more flow through there. So it's essentially, and actually, the bridge going to the first hole. So it's, the permit we have is for triple structure replacement, so, why it hasn't come very quickly, but...
And what's the timeframe of doing work on that?
So the permits, applications with DEP. We received information a week ago requesting additional information. So once that goes back, that should be permit. So we have funding for the spillway and the rear bridge, but there could be a function of the permit requirements governing when we construct, if it's tied to trout or, you know, flora and fauna there.
Okay. Thank you. Other members of council have questions. Mike?
Thank you, Council President. Thanks for your presentation.
Uh, we're looking at a design, it's more of a horseshoe that it would have and the, the intent of the design for the golf course spillway would be to allow more water to flow out, um, in routine storms. Uh, now you have the flows Rick had mentioned earlier, obviously all, all backed it off, but this for the lesser storms will absolutely allow more water to freely flow through the Passaic while reducing some of the log jams behind, so. It would also have the, uh, the gate or the valve that we have now that doesn't function properly. So for larger predicted storms, we could get a permit to lower the levels of the pond to assist with some storage. Uh, would include that. It also includes the back bridge, golf course bridge, I don't have the name, but, um, would raise that some, again, to also permit just more flow through there, so. So it's essentially, and actually the, the bridge going to the first hole, so it's, the permit we have is for triple structure replacement, so. Why hasn't come very quickly, but.
And what, what's the timeframe of doing work on that?
Uh, so the, the permits, applications with DEP, we received information a week ago requesting additional information. So once that goes back, that, that should be permit. So, um, we have funding for the spillway and the rear bridge, but there could be a function of the permit requirements governing when we construct, if it's high to trout or, you know, flora and fauna there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other members of council have questions, Mike?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, thanks for your presentation. Love the maps and very, very super informative. Uh, one, a question, if we owned the culverts, the ones that Union County, uh, had, how different would these options be?
Um, we would definitely be looking at upgrading the culvert, um, but we don't, right? So we, we would be looking at potentially increasing the capacity of the culvert right now, going back to the numbers that I tossed around, but with the CFS, the cubic feet per second, we estimate that culvert is rated for about 900. So once you get to a five and a 10-year storm, it's already out there. Um, that would be the number one thing, we would be looking to upgrade the culvert.
So the follow-on question to that is, how, have we been engaging with Union County? I mean, obviously this project has been in the works for quite a while. What has their response been to cooperate, uh, in, in this project?
So, um, Aaron could touch a little bit more upon that, but before he does, um, obviously, Union County has been replacing culverts systematically over the years. Uh, they've done Blackburn, they've done Prospect, they've done Division. And I think they've been focusing more on the, I'll say higher priority, higher trafficked of culverts. I don't know if there's any more information other than that, Aaron?
No, they, they own all, um, culverts within the city, so they generally go after structurally deficient, so they're going more for the loading on top. To replace a culvert and increase the capacity is, the permitting is a, is a bear to do that because the rules do govern 500 feet upstream and downstream, you can't impact the 100-year storm. So it's pretty tricky to actually increase culverts nowadays and then that's been in for at least 20 years now, so, um, in terms of the, the rules and regulations. So even if we owned it and opted to replace it on our own, I think we'd be challenged to just make a taller bridge that just all the water goes through, so. Because probably if we did that, it would get stuck at Canoe Brook Parkway then, so. So it's kind of a whole system starting at the golf course and then down to the Passaic River.
No, I, I understand that, but so, but I, I guess that's part of my point. It, it sounds like we are, like managing a portion that we can and we're not looking at this holistically because we can't look at the one down on Canoe Brook Parkway, we can't look at the one on Wallace Road. So I'm not calling it a Band-Aid, but we're doing the best we can around those constraints, which are just frustrating, right? Because you'd think that effective, uh, an effective thing would be where the county would work with the municipality to look at the entire stretch and come up with a, uh, a plan that's rational where we don't have to do these workarounds because we don't own the culvert.
I think then we would be potentially just adding even more time to it, um, to do that holistic approach, although from an engineering perspective, we would love to do that and to be involved in that. Um, you're probably looking at at least a four or five-year drainage study of the entire basin, um, from essentially its discharge point at, uh, at the Passaic River all the way upstream to its highest point. But, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Uh, Matt?
Thank you, Council President. Thanks for that excellent presentation. When, uh, how often are we getting the five-year storms? Are we getting them every year?
So the five and 10-year storms are happening a lot more frequently.
Yeah.
So we're getting, I, I think we estimate about three a year.
Three five-year storms per year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's important, it's important to note though, it's not...
Yearly.
A five-year storm doesn't mean it's supposed to happen every five years, right?
Right.
So it's just, okay.
Oh, you mean, what does it mean?
So it's, it's more of a probability. So for example, a 100-year storm has a 1% chance of happening in any one year.
Right.
So, um, so a five-year storm, you can have three or four in, in, in one year, um, it's just not likely.
Right, right, but...
But it's been happening.
It's very possible that we could be having five-year storms at multiple times a year for the foreseeable future and 100-year storms we could be having as well.
Yeah.
And so the other thing is, the, when they first built this property that, back in the 60s, was it flooding the exact same when they first opened it and first built it?
So the, we actually have some old letters during the South Gate development, that south end block, um, there was already significant amount of water coming from the golf course. So, and I can, oh, actually I don't have it on here anymore, but there, the, that discharge point from the golf course at the top of the hill actually used to be a small stream that used to cut across through Wallace Road and then down to Canoe Brook. So even during the construction, we have letters of, um, one resident, the one resident that was on that block actually complaining about drainage already at that time, so.
And so it seems like negligence on the part of the original developer, but also the golf course, which is not in Summit, right? Not, and not, not part of Summit at all?
The...
The Canoe Brook?
Canoe Brook Country Club, it is still, so that, that portion of the golf course...
Is still Summit?
Is in Summit, yes.
Okay. Forgive me. And, but if that wasn't a golf course, if that was regular residential area, this, we wouldn't have this problem either.
I, I think we would be seeing the same amount of water coming from that area.
Oh, same amount.
Now, if you were to say, you know, that that was residential, in a residential area right now, the rules would allow, would force you to manage the storm water differently if you were to convert that now to a residential zone.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah. And one thing I'll note, um, sorry to, to cut you off from your question, um, that decrease in acreage for the basin area, so the, the original culvert was designed for 440, you know, we're talking about 334. It's almost negligible because of the more frequency of storms, right?
Right.
So you're getting more intense storms more frequently, so that decrease helps us, you know.
Understood. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Rick, I really appreciate the detail. So in 1967, when they did this, um, the, we didn't have the regulations that we do now about runoff, downhill runoff and all the things you need to provide to the, the planning, the zoning board when you're gonna build something. And just to make, so people understand, a golf course, while green, is impervious coverage, which is very similar to a, a residential development.
Right.
Um, so they, in 67, if they had built a development there, um, it would be no different than it is today.
Possibly not.
If they were starting building it now, obviously things would be different because the, the regulations are different.
Right.
Has, um, just for people's understanding, what do you know have, um, has Canoe Brook done in the last, you know, 20, 30 years to do anything to ameliorate, uh, the runoff problem?
Well, I know for one is they have a very large detention basin at the intersection of Bellevue, it's actually at an intersection, it's a, a bend in Bellevue, which, um, stores a significant amount of water and it, or I think you're aware of one of the projects they had, right?
That's all I'm aware of. They did some just inner site development for their own doing some underdrains and projects like that, but primarily was the large basin, which is about 10 years ago. And if you've gone by in some storms, you see it does fill up pretty significantly. So it is, it is doing its job, but it's just a sheer quantity of, of water. And I would guess, I'm not sure, that they probably keep their ponds, um, a lot, you know, dredged more often, possibly there's still requirements for that to make it very challenging, so. But that said, with that flow, even though ponds being, you know, five, six feet deep, it's still just a lot of water.
Right. And, and they, you know, they're uphill. So in your seven options, there's nothing in there that's making an ask of Canoe Brook. Have you considered that and decided it didn't make any sense or, or what?
I, I think the original, um, and it just predates me a little, but when they put in the last basin was a result of, of the city requesting additional.
Mm-hmm.
But at this time, you know, we can't, I'm sure we could argue that they're making the situation worse, but I'm sure they'll counter-argue that it's development upstream. So we can't really prove that they're doing anything to force them to do it, so. We could definitely try the, you know, asking route again, I mean, we have met with them a lot, but I think they felt they did a pretty significant improvement already, so.
Right. I was just curious.
Yeah.
So you think that the, the combination of diversion and Millian paving and, would make some significant impact, won't fix everything, but make an impact?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Beth?
I just want, I wanna go back really quickly, make sure I understand, the, the golf course, the municipal golf course pond project, that's going forward regardless of what we decide to do on Wallace Road, that's, is that correct? And then, and that will ameliorate the problem somewhat, but it won't fix the problem. Um, and then I just wanna thank you guys for putting together this presentation, putting so much time in it. We've heard from the residents several times about what issue this is, it's near my neighborhood, I see it all the time and this is something that the residents have been living with for a long time and really needs to be addressed. So, um, thank you for focusing on it, we're gonna focus on it as well and make sure that we get this done.
I, I know there are residents out there who've been waiting patiently, so I wanna give them a chance if they have questions, wanna come up, ask questions now, now is the time to, to ask or, or discuss it. Come on, Terry. Just, uh, you know the routine to identify yourself in your address, please.
Excellent. Terrence Hayes, 17 Wallace Road, H A Y E S is spelling my last name. Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Mr. David for letting me speak. I appreciate the work being put in by Rick, Aaron, and Paul to kind of put this together. Um, really appreciate the time. I just wanna ground you all in, in, in the issue itself and I'd invite you all to my home tomorrow night because I'm pretty sure with the remnants of, of the hurricane from Carolinas coming up, you'll see this, uh, real-time. Uh, what you'll see is the town sewers coming the opposite way, so flowing out. You'll see the, uh, culvert stream flood out halfway up my lawn on 17 and halfway up my neighbor's lawn who's here, um, on number, I guess that's 15? 21, the next one up. But you'll see it. You'll see, uh, homes, uh, my home and two Route 24, which is dead-ended as you know, trapped because the water will come all the way over Wallace Road. You have a safety issue. The people right to the immediate left of me just moved in, uh, September 1, they're renting their, their property. They're surgeons at, uh, Marston Memorial Hospital. Uh, I will be advising them to park their cars up the block as we do so that they can get out in case of an emergency. I mean, it's a severe situation. Um, I appreciate the work being put in, uh, but it's been a really long time and it's time to start, you know, make, put in some action. I have met with the county and, uh, and their view, um, and I appreciate you asking because I think they have the responsibility here. Their stuff, their, their culvert works as designed. It's supposed to take three feet of water, they came out, they looked at it, they said they're comfortable with that. I've met with the golf course, uh, and the golf course says it's, you know, the top of Summit that's hurting them, coming on them and they need to get the water off. The golf course though gets the water off their fairways by putting new drains in all the time and you can see it, they put white pipes in, no permits, right into the culvert. So if you look in the culvert, you see little white pipes that are in there that are not the original pipes, they're put in to clear off the fairways so the golfers can get through the next day. So I think, um, I don't know what we can do with the county, uh, but I think the golf, we have to take task to the golf course as well. Um, I believe your one plan about putting, uh, something to keep it on the golf course on the, uh, other side of Wallace will, will, will not work, I think they, they won't have it. You know, they, they won't have it because it's gonna hurt their golf course, they, they will not accept that and, and I think that would be a tough one. I love the plans of going up Rose Lane at the same time fixing the spillway, which we've been working on for years in the, in the, uh, in the golf course that's blocking the whole thing up at the municipal golf course and I, I, I think we would be good. So thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And your work.
Uh, to, to, to the question about the golf course and putting in, uh, additional piping system, uh, have you guys looked into this or if you haven't, I think we need to look into it, right?
They had one permit, like, yeah, I don't have the information like with me, but it's within the 10-year, they did some underdrain project that was permitted. Anything since then we're not aware of and we could absolutely look into because, um...
I, I think...
Generally we see, you know, I guess we can't see at the far side of the golf course to see if work's going on, but, um, but anything like that, if you ever see heavy equipment, absolutely let us know. Even if it's just someone else's property, um, you know, wants to be a snitch, but it's just something that impacts everyone.
I mean, it'd be, things should be permitted, right? So.
Appreciate your consideration on this and trying to get something done here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? David?
Dave Goodstein, 25 Wallace Road, G O O D S T E I N. I, uh, my concern is, I forget which option, maybe it's number three where the water was gonna come down Wallace and then make a left onto Rose. I live right on that corner, I've been there for 26 years and the amount, the, the major amount of water that comes down Wallace Road comes from the southern end. So I, I believe that's what you said, that's where majority, but that water is coming off of the golf course. There, there are no ponds up on that end. Is there any way to get the golf course to put a, a retaining pond up there because that water comes off of, uh, Woodland? There's a, a trench or a, I don't, a culvert. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, so right here...
That overflows.
This is the majority of water that I believe you're speaking of here.
And a little bit to the left, more.
Down here?
Well, from the corner on.
Oh, from here down, you're saying this whole area here?
Yeah. That, that's the water that pours off of the golf course over the curb into the...
Yeah, this is just general sheet flow. Now, most of this water right now is running down the road, um, and then it either gets captured in an, in an inlet, which most of the time it doesn't, it just keeps sheet flowing. With the Millian paving, we would install a proper crown on the road and get it to drain into the inlets. Um, and then down here at the intersection, that's where we would divert it potentially.
Well, how you gonna divert that? Because that's my house on the corner and that water just comes right up, off the, uh...
Onto your lawn.
Right. The side one.
Right, so going back to this option here, so this is an extension of a storm sewer that is on Canoe Brook Parkway, so this green line is a pipe. This little square, I don't know if you could see it very well, but this, that one and that one, those are three inlets that we would be installing along the curb line to capture any of the water that is sheet flowing down the hill.
There's no, there are no sewers on Rose.
I'm sorry?
There are no sewers on Rose Lane.
No. There is no storm sewer, there's sanitary sewer, but yes.
But what's gonna stop the, how you gonna get that water to make a left turn? Without putting a wall up?
Again, that would be with grading, that would be with our Millian paving.
But the amount of water comes, it's six to eight inches high, that water that comes down, it bypasses the sewers on Wallace right now.
Right, again, with the Millian paving. So that's why inlets are spaced out along the road the way they are.
Right.
So if the road isn't paved correctly, you can have 50 inlets and if the grading is not correct, it'll all try and make its way down to one inlet and that's where you get that six to eight inch sheet flow. If the road is paved the right way, it'll slowly taper off at each inlet, so the proper amount of water will go to each inlet and then by the time it gets down to the end of the street, it's not as deep.
Where's the water that comes off of Woodland? That comes through that little, uh, trench on the side of the road? If you go up Wallace then and make a left and come down, all that, all that water.
Oh, so that, that little ditch along, that is actually a completely separate drainage basin that cuts underneath, um, Woodland, uh, Woodland Avenue and then goes out to Canoe Brook and then goes off to the Passaic River.
So it doesn't make a right turn?
Yeah, it does not come down here.
Because about halfway down on Wallace, there's a section where that creek comes right out onto Wallace.
So that this, the, the trench that you're speaking of is right along this section of Woodland Avenue? And then there is infrastructure in this area that diverts it and brings it down this way? So it's actually part of a completely separate...
If you make a right onto Wallace off of Woodland and about 500 feet up, no, maybe half, maybe halfway down, there's a creek that comes off of the, uh, Canoe Brook Golf Course where all the water fl- falls out. That's where most of the water comes from.
Right there.
Uh, yeah, somewhere in that area.
There's a head wall there, that is what we're talking about, the 53 acres that comes off of the golf course, that's what we wanna divert.
Somebody put sandbags on now, that's all they do. I don't know if that was the town.
We'll, we'll look at it.
You think it was a private resident that put the sandbag?
I don't know. I, I've seen him there for about five, six months now.
To stop the water from coming?
I don't know why they put it there, it, it keeps it from going to the left.
Dave, is it, is it there right now? The sandbags?
I've looked, yeah.
Okay.
We'll check it out. We'll check it out.
Check it out.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Have any questions, comments?
I have one more question. The Millian pave, when you say summer 2019, you're not going to Mill and pave before that, right?
No, no, no.
Because it would not make any sense.
Also, we want to keep it all in one project. Drainage portion would be done first, along with all the utility work, then curb work, Millian paving is left.
And which option do you think would, you know, dramatically fix the problem? Not, not completely, but dramatically improve the drainage?
Yeah, I think it'll end up being a combination. I think we can do, we've done storage before on Waldron. We did storage underneath the road. We added storm sewers there. We diverted some upstream. I think it, you have to attack it in multiple ways. So, and I think that's what we'll end up doing here. Grading, diversion, and storage.
Mary, please.
Just a quick question. I know this is projected for the, for the spring, but, you know, in light of the fact that we are going to get rain, we don't know how much, and the fact that it is hurricane season, we just don't know where they're going, where they're going to come, is there anything at all we can do to help the residents out, short-term, at all? I mean, he was talking about sandbags, I don't know what those do, but is there anything at all, or are our hands kind of tied?
I think our hands are tied at this point. I think if there was a short-term fix, it probably would have done, even been done before us. And we're somewhat of doers, right?
Right, right, you are.
So we see these problems, and we kind of tackle them. I don't see anything short-term that could be done.
Can I ask you a question? As far as the depth of our pond versus Canoe Brook, you said their pond is five to six feet, or it's deeper than ours, ours is one to three feet. If we made our pond deeper, would that make any difference?
Very little, just because of the flow that's entering it. So we did look in a few years just to the permitting process of it. It's, it's not 1980 anymore in terms of, because once you start unearthing some of that, I doubt that you're getting any fertilizer used upstream, that we now own it. So disposal of the dredge material is a challenge, and you would gain very little.
Understood. Okay.
Steve? I got a quick question. You know, I'm going to put my sewer hat on, if you will. How about that, huh? But it's not...
I don't know what other hats you had.
Well, it was a prior life. But have we CCTV'd and have looked into, like, lining it to push the water out at a quicker pace, or anything to that effect?
So we typically include all of the TVing of the sewer lines ahead of our projects, so we're not there yet, but we will. We will be TVing all of the sanitary and storm lines in relation to this project.
But that could help if we, with the storms coming up, if we could identify if there were tree branches or sediment in, in the lines?
Sure.
That's to Mary's point about the short-term fix.
Yeah, it's, that, I don't even know if I would put a short-term fix category in it, but it's, yes, it would be, it would be good maintenance and improvements on our end.
Good, good.
And Steve, that was your previous career, right? Was installing?
That was selling, not installing. It's a big difference.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Yes, please, come on up, sir.
My first hat, so I'll plug in all your information.
Yeah.
Sean Cooksey, last, 41 Wallace.
Yes, great, thank you.
Cooksey, C-O-O-K-S-E-Y.
Perfect.
Just what was brought up about the sandbags. That was done by the golf course after my neighbor had complained about the water flowing off on that one trench. It's approximately that first sand trap coming off, that's where all the flow is, that area right there, which is right next to my house. They put it out there after we'd asked, talking to the golf course, to clean out their area. They have all their trees, all the leaves will blow down the golf course downhill, go into those culverts, go into their spots, so the water then flows onto the street. Maintenance on their end is part of the culprit, not letting the water flow go through. They put those sandbags out, they were out for about six months, I believe, what did you say? And then they took them off the street to repair the holes in their fence, so their dogs wouldn't get out of the golf course. So I just wanted to let you guys know.
Appreciate it.
With the sandbags, the golf course acknowledged it, and they didn't matter.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on.
Joe Wagner, 7 Wallace Road. I might have missed, I was a little late. Has anyone looked into possibly dredging the river from Wallace to Canoe Brook? Because it's not deep. There's some walls there, but they're, like, deteriorated over the years.
Not the actual river, that gets, where it's tricky in most areas in Summit, you know, the city does not own or have jurisdiction of the rivers themselves, so that would take a real inter-agency collaborative effort to look at that. And again, you'd be up to permitting, because you can't make it so deep that you've now impacted somewhere upstream or downstream, but specifically right in that stretch, nothing formal movement like that in terms of dredge. And I'm not sure how much you would actually gain, other than maybe some increased flow or velocity just within the channel, because you're still really restricted by your downstream structure. So even if you get it there faster, if they're not adjusted, you would just gain very little.
Just seems that if you do anything with the golf course, increase any flow to the river, the river can't handle it now, so, you know, it just seems to be a combination of both.
Right, ironically, the State River actually has some capacity at this location, and the culvert that's, you go over the spillway, that stretch there, because it goes under 190 River Road, or like the Wells Fargo Building, those structures actually have some capacity, which is why we're going to be able to do the golf course spillway project. Otherwise, if they were maxed out, then there would be, you know, little we could do downstream. So that's actually, you know, that's good information for trying to solve any of these challenges.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, guys. Really great presentation about this. I think it's very helpful. I think when the residents came the last time around, we said, this has been going on for decades and decades, but we've come to the end of the road. We're trying to not just kicking the can. We have come to the end of the road. This is the beginning of solving the problem, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Moving on, the next presentation you guys are going to do about traffic signals, so, and if anyone wants to leave between now and then, that's fine, but let's go on to traffic signals. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor, and Common Council. For those who don't know, I'm Aaron Trager, the City Engineer, Deputy DCS Director, which means I get to do the more fun presentations for the evening. So Rick did a great job on his. I want to go through this very quickly, one, because we've been here before for sanitary sewer, we've been here for storm sewer. There's a lot of the infrastructure that DCS maintains that we almost don't highlight, and it's, I don't want to say taken for granted, but it's just not talked about or brought to the forefront as much. So we're going to try to go over that a little bit tonight. Real quick on signals, so they've been in use for about over 100 years. There's like a legend that they tried in 1860 in London with one that had kerosene oil, and it caught fire, and it did very badly. So the electronic ones were, started about 100 years ago. So we can't destroy them up anywhere. You complete a warrant analysis to justify it, it's prepared by an engineer. Some of ours that have been up forever, I can't say how they went up, but we could assume they followed pretty good practice. Design is governed by what we call the MUTCD, which is a very thick book that engineers use for, it's called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. I don't think it's the same, but I'll make it up, but it's not, it's not your mother's traffic signal anymore. I mean, they're very complex electronic systems. They used to have hardwire, and a lot of Public Works would fix most of it, you know, in-house, but you'll see later on that it's not the case anymore. And they're not free, so each signal can run about $150,000, $200,000. You can go higher, depending on the level of bells and whistles, where that's kind of a standard price for a simple installation. Obviously, you could save some money when you do them as part of a project, which is what we try to do, but more on that later. So what we have here, and this is one of our more advanced, newer signals, so this is over on the forest. Probably just looks like a mundane green box, but when you open the control box up, this is what you have inside, so you can kind of see the complexity there. You're no longer talking traffic loops, you talk cameras, the timing, there's a lot going on there. And by no means am I an expert in the innards of them. To the left side there, that's just your standard meter panel, because they are electric, so standard, right off the pole electricity. Good thing is with, you know, modern-day LED technology, you know, the cost to operate these is reduced. Front panel right here, which is here, that opens up with the special funky-looking key here, just looks like a fake key. That's the police access panel. So when you open just that, you can either throw it to flash mode, you could switch it to generator, or you could switch it to manual operation. This wire here is just a push button, so an officer or engineer could keep changing the cycle manually. You would do that if you have, you know, significant event or just need to move traffic along. On the side, you'll see this, that's my reflection. This is the generator, generator hookup right there, so you'll see that on the side of them. Little top hat right here, Garmin, it's just the GPS sync timing, so we don't have these on very many, but these are the DeForest signals, the newer ones, so they do talk to each other. So even when we've tested it for generator, when you actually knock the power out, a couple cycles later, they are back together. So if you're ever bored of the light, just look right or left, and you'll see that they're working in sync. Some of your more standard hardware is, you know, the mast arm, the post over here, this is just the head itself. And then up here, which you see a lot, that's the camera detection. That's, you know, in the effort to increase the efficiency of intersections, that is actually set the certain cycles there. That will detect the vehicle, and it will move the cycle along. So depending where it is, like, so under forest, the forest always has green until the approach has come, and that'll start the cycle. Back in the day, which they still exist, not very many, used to be a traffic loop in the ground, almost looked like gum in a perfect square. That was the older technology. This is the new technology right here. People have thought it's actually filming them, that it's a red light camera, none of which is true. That is just detecting vehicles to start the cycle. The head itself, most people, kind of when they see this, are kind of shocked at the actual size of it. So this is the size of it. This is hanging 15 feet in the air, and then you suddenly realize why you could see it from a half-mile away. They're large, so it's a little difficult to see, because it forgot where the vices are pointed down for obvious reasons, but when you scroll through here, what you have for the red light, this is your older technology here.
Max blundered back there.
All right. Sorry about that.
This is what we do to our legal counsel.
So that is your, that's the older technology, it's an incandescent bulb. Uses more electricity, doesn't last too long. We have very few of them left, we've been swapping out, as you kind of scroll down through here. Well, then, yeah, this would be your modern-day LED. And again, so now it's a lot different, because it's actually like one individual unit attached, there's nothing to change. Far more efficient, and we've swapped most of our jobs to that currently. And obviously, you have the standard turnout there, so. But that is, that is your standard signal right there, so. Another reason we're here, we just completed an inventory and what we call an efficiency project. So the reason the project came to be was identified by an emergency dispatch in 2016. So what happened at that time, the dispatch center actually called Union County to come to a signal. Why they came out, I don't know, because they don't maintain any of the signals in the city. They came out, said it wasn't theirs, then they called me, then they called city DPW staff to come out. And it just raised the question of, what do we have out there? How do we know who has what? To just speed things along and be more efficient. So that began in 2016. It wrapped up this summer, and it had three primary goals. So first one was to obtain a comprehensive inventory of our signal network. Second was to prepare for emergency situations. Knock on wood, hope we don't have any, but unfortunately, we do, and we're pretty well prepared for it. To establish a procedure for the maintenance and the response for callouts, and we have to point out, it's a group effort. Signals don't really fall under anyone. It's engineering, it's Public Works, and it's police. So we also had to kind of pool everyone together to get all the information we had in one place. Comprehensive inventory, I will email this around, but this basically summarizes the 30 signals we have along, it's a cheat sheet, really. The mission of the cheat sheet is to get this laminated and installed in, not installed, just given to all the police vehicles, DPW vehicles and engineering vehicles, because it's a lot of information that you should have just readily available. Inventory revealed, we have 30 city-owned traffic signals, so that's 30 we physically maintain. Six additional, which would be 36th in, are in the city, but they're DOT-owned and operated. Example would be like off the ramps from 78. Four are the city's sole responsibility. So what that means is, we bear the cost for replacing them and the maintenance of it. Most signals are on a county road, so the county will replace them and install them, but then it's ours to maintain. And those are DeForest and downtown in Springfield, because those are city roads, they're our signals. Four, we just have four flashing traffic signals, just one over by Brayton School. There's three of those RFBs, or Rapid Rectangle Flashing Beacons. Six of the school flashing beacons that are, you know, programmed just to come on morning and afternoon drop-off, or pickup, rather. And there's a whole, we have a whole slew. Oldest is 1992, it's a Broad and Walnut. It's still working, we'll probably ask the county to replace that soon, but it's operating fine. And the newest is the forest that came on 2017. Goal two, emergency preparedness. So primary power, they all operate in standard, one of them no electricity. Alternate power is battery, so now all 30 have a battery backup. What you have for runtime is, it's anyone's guess, these batteries are sitting in a non-climate-controlled environment for years on end. You could get one, you could get 12 hours, but you'll get some amount of time to permit first responders to make adjustments. After that, you go to a portable generator, so all 30 are now generator-ready. All 30 have a cable in the box, just to make it more efficient, so anyone with it, anyone. DCS or police showing up with the keys can install a generator almost instantly. And additional cables are in the, you know, with police, Public Works, and engineering vehicles. We installed telltale lights, as they call them. So if you've driven around and seen these signals, right here, green light means everything is okay. If the red light's on, it doesn't mean everything's bad. It might be on battery, it might be in the generator, or it might have had a previous failure. So it's just good to know. For a while, they were reversed a little bit, but now everyone has red and green, so it's easy for police, engineering, Public Works driving around to know something's up with that signal. Goal three, maintenance and response. So going back to the first problem we identified, everyone now has a sticker on it identifying whose jurisdiction it is. S1 means it's a Summit signal. S2, it's a Summit flasher. NJ1, it's DOT. So at least whoever's on the scene first knows exactly who to call to get response to the signal. So summarize what we've done over the last two summers, in addition to the inventory. We installed the 30 telltale lights, we added camera detection at four intersections, had to get additional cables for 18 signals, generator hookups at nine, so that completes the whole program we started by the police just after Sandy or Irene, I messed them up. Battery backup was missing at four signals, and then we've made the inventory cheat sheet for DCS and police. So the next steps, we still need to schedule a coordination meeting with police, just to go over and make sure they get the laminated forms, and just go over some processes and how we're going to operate moving forward. The generators shown there are currently down in the basement here. They're going to get moved to nice storage at Public Works, and we're going to actually initiate an annual maintenance of the signals, not just be proactive, we're going to go once a year, because they even have some things like light bulbs in them, filters that just should be replaced. Not showing here, but now that this is complete and the Morris Avenue Bridge is open, we will move on to timing changes. People have asked about that. We've played with some over the years, we have not had normal traffic for three years. Now school is back, so now's the time we'll start identifying areas. Morris Avenue is one that comes up pretty frequently. That was done by the county in like '06, but timing might have slipped, traffic patterns have changed, so now we're able to move on to that. We have inventory of what we have, because the inventory also has the detail for what the controllers are and items, and the timing itself, so now we actually can proceed with that. Just for the listening audience, always operate the pedestrian push buttons, the ones that have them. They're taken for granted sometimes, and first if they don't work, let us know, but not every intersection's in a recall mode, which means it automatically pops up, so[1701.32] not every intersection's in a recall mode, which means it automatically pops up, so you do see it by some of our garages, that if you don't hit it, you won't hit the wall. So this is just a safety thing, so just always hit the button, it takes a second. If you see red tail lights on, call police. I'd say you can call DCS too, but if it's after hours, it can get the word out and they can move the process to dispatch. Same thing with signal malfunctions, you know, especially at nighttime. It's six square miles, they have, you know, a few officers on the road, they might not pass all 30 signals within a reasonable amount of time. Worst thing dispatch could say is, we know about it, so. But generally, if we know about it, we have something there or, you know, set up something. And then just seven of our signals go to flashers overnight, people out that late. Just be aware, if it's red and it's yellow, just to, you know, operate accordingly. That's it. That's old school and it's connected in New York right there. I don't have any, so I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Thanks for a very interesting presentation. Marjorie.
Thank you for the presentation, Aaron. I was just wondering, for county roads, who sets the timing? Is it us or the county?
It's the county initially, but then we can alter it moving forward. So when we request one, one we can bring up. River Road and Chatham Road is getting a signal. We completed a warrant analysis, the county agreed, they're going to fund the signal, so they would present the study, well, they present the signal based on the data they obtained. I believe it'll be this winter that they'll get the traffic data. So as that moves over time, as timing changes or the need for timing changes, it would fall on us.
And we don't have to go back to the county to do it? We can just go ahead and do that?
We always run it by them, but the last few times, they just let it do what we needed to do.
Okay, thank you.
Marjorie?
No, I was just going to comment on the same issue of timing, is that most of the complaints I get are Morris Avenue.
Right.
And I'm really glad to hear that's on the to-do list. Yeah, good.
I have one question. Going from DeForest, which turns then into Kent Place Boulevard, where the Morris Avenue, where the bridge is now completed, there are people who end up turning left onto the bridge when you're not supposed to. Is there any way we could put some, because there's a signal that's there, the coming from, onto the, from up the bridge on Morris, coming towards making the left onto Springfield Avenue, there's a little box kind of signal that says no left turn from certain hours. Is there a way of putting something on that pole, signal pole to show you can't make a left? Because people do it all the time and it's really dangerous.
Which way, Kent Place?
When you're, when you're going from, when you're going up to Forest, going to Forest towards Kent Place, the JCC's on the, on the left side, right? The bridge is on your, on your, on your left side, sorry. The JCC's on your right, so the bridge is on your left. You're not supposed to make a left. And there's a, like a little sign that says do not make a left, but people, there's plenty of people who ignore it, it seems. So is there a way of, and I think it may be a visual thing, but people are looking at the light in front of them, they're not looking at the sign to the side of them?
Well, well, look at it, I mean, we did check that the sign was still there, but if I had to imagine, that probably something of the geometrics have changed just slightly enough that makes it more enticing despite, you know, years of not being able to do it. It's just probably something to the eye where they're like, oh, this looks safer now, despite the sign being there.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, but I've seen people do it all the time.
No, we had coming down the hill taking right, we had a fair amount of people lately, but we just put new signs up for that too, so. So definitely some geometrics have changed or that people are, you know, pushing the envelope a little bit and we got to keep it safe, so.
Okay. Matt?
In the green boxes, do the generator hookups, they can send power out as well or only in?
In terms of, well, which, which box? So the generator gets hooked up next to it and then it puts directly into the signal box itself, so it's operating it. If the generator has just an extra plug on it, yes, you could plug something in on it. I'm not sure if it does. It might actually, so.
Just wondering, if you needed power, could you go out from the traffic signal or not?
Yeah, well, if you actually look in the actual electric meter box, so in here, you do have a-
But that's like little, little power if you needed a big hookup.
No, because they, they operate on such little power at this point, you would just get your standard, you know, 120 volt.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Aaron, for the presentation. Just quickly, you mentioned a light going in at Chatham and River. Just for people at home, I know we've got another installation eventually that's going to be on River and Passaic, right?
Yes, so River and Passaic is being funded by the developer.
Right.
Should get underway probably about the same time. Then you also have Sunrise, which is right at Morris and River. They'll be adding a phase to that signal, so I'll hold another setup to let them lead their site.
Where is that going to be? That's right at where the-
That's right where Morris hits River, so. So those are actually two competing construction sites right now. So as part of it, there will be some interconnectivity between the three of them, because now you're going from one signal without a phase facing north, and now three, that could create chaos. So that's part of the requirement for Sunrise will be installing the, I guess probability, but the connectivity, so.
So just to follow on on that, are there any other intersections that you guys with the police are looking at that might warrant a traffic signal? Or, and what is the process for that to happen?
Would really be, there would have to be some request either from, you know, the safety committee or works committee, or something that we know has accident history or it's just not flowing properly or as efficiently as it could. And then it would be just having a warrant analysis completed, so. We've looked at none really recently. The last warrant analysis we did was actually, was Chatham and River. We did one for Hobart and Springfield a while back, which actually didn't meet it. But then, again, we were on a three-year kind of hiatus with the, with the traffic pattern. Because you don't want to install one or do a warrant analysis and you have a detour in place, because then you're on the hook for having installed that signal, possibly with, you know, improper traffic laws. So, but now is, is the time, if there is anywhere out there that people think, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the public that has any questions, comments, suggestions, ideas? Great. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Excellent presentation, guys, both of you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Now we are at the portion of our meeting, a little bit later than usual, for public comments. So if there are folks from the public who would like to speak, just come up to the microphone, identify yourself and give your address and, and it's something that's not on the agenda, so that would be great. Okay, thank you.
My name is Fred Blau. I live at 59 Woodland Avenue.
Excuse me, which avenue?
Woodland.
Woodland, thank you.
I want to address, I want to introduce a big topic for serious consideration by the council. I think that the city of Summit should investigate the idea of building a solar microgrid. As you may know, a microgrid is a very much scaled-down version of the national electric grid. But unlike the national grid, it is a highly resilient system, one that can be isolated in the event of a power outage, so that critical facilities can retain electric power. Our last serious power outage was brought about by, by superstorm Sandy in 2012. Storms like this, while unusual, are becoming more frequent and more powerful because of global warming. Furthermore, the threat of a cyber attack on the electric grid is now a distinct reality, one that is potentially catastrophic. Outage durations might last not just days or weeks, but several months or even more. Just think about not having water for months, or not being able to move, remove sewage for months. Specifically, what I envision is a microgrid powered by solar panels on rooftops and over parking lots, with a big battery to deal with nighttime. During normal operation, when there is no power outage, the microgrid could connect, would connect, to the trainer substation and run up to Overlook Hospital, some 2.4 miles along Morris Avenue, powering the high school, city hall, the police and fire departments, the library, and the middle school on the way. A possible addition would be the community center. Cabling would be underground to protect it from falling trees. The state of New Jersey has an energy master plan with a 2015 update that explicitly calls for the use of microgrids and for providing some funding for them. Some federal money has also been available. The city of Hoboken is presently building its microgrid with considerable support from the state of New Jersey and from the federal government. Montclair is developing its own microgrid. Eleven other communities in New Jersey have obtained state funding for feasibility studies of their microgrids. So far, the city of Summit has not taken advantage of these opportunities. I think we should, at the very least, look into the situation and think about how we might make our city more resilient to this type of emergency. A project like this requires considerable time and money, several years and millions of dollars. But if we want to do it, the first step, working up some plans, does not need much in the way of resources. I can offer some more detailed ideas as a starting point, which I would like to present to the council at its convenience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Could I have your statement, please? Thank you.
I have.
Oh, perfect.
Ten cups.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. And I'd ask Councilwoman Ogden maybe to say a few words about what we've already started doing.
I was going to say, we are of this, like mind. We, we agree with you. And we are currently investigating grants. We are currently investing perfect spots. We are investigating cost and where we can effectively put up these solar grids so that we can start to be more sustainable and looking into that energy. So I hear you and we are really working on this.
Okay, I can give you a PowerPoint presentation sometime at your convenience.
Sure. Maybe with general services.
Absolutely, that would be great. Yeah, yeah, general services. That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Matt?
I just want to add on, yeah, you're speaking my language there, Mr., you're speaking my language, Mr. Wheel. Ever since I read that book, as I'm sure you did, Ted Koppel's book, Lights Out.
Yeah, yeah. Very frightening book.
I've been thinking about this, yeah. Thank you for that.
There's, there's a new one out now by another author that's similarly frightening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please, next.
Thank you. My name is Lorelei Burns, B-U-R-N-S. I live at 160 Ashton Road in Summit, New Jersey. First, I cannot resist showing you the flashlight I have in my pocket. I am among the 500, and this is a kudo to you, this is how I will get home tonight. We don't have electricity in our part of town. The reason we're here, my neighbors and I, we do have a new speed bump in front of our homes. Speed hump, excuse me, in front of our homes. We have met with Aaron Schreger, we have met with Chief Weck, we have met with Nora Radis. As instructed, I understand that speed humps report to the safety committee. We have submitted a DAR. Rosemary has replied, she and I have chatted. We understand that that's the process that we should follow in order to request a meeting. The reason I'm here tonight is to assure you that we are really eager to receive what was also part of that request, and that is data. We're very interested in understanding, we expect from surveys, questionnaires, and traffic studies, what methodology was used to collect data. This is project management 101 kinds of things. What kind of methodology was used? What kind of standards were used to collect and analyze the data? What were the goals of the project as originally conceived? What are the expectations for the kinds of improvements that will follow? For us, the speed bump has what we truly believe are unintended consequences that we find very intrusive. And we need and want to be more aware of how the analysis basically was done to get to this point, so that perhaps, so that we're better prepared to have a conversation about alternatives.
Right.
We are eager to receive the data.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Justin Chang, 158 Ashton Road. I'm with Lorelei. I just wanted to make one extra comment. I think we were all very impressed with the Wallace Road work that was done in the project and the care and extensive work that was done with coming up with the different options. So we hope that these speed humps that were put in had also equal care and consideration that was given before they were put in, to take into account that, so many neighbors here on Wallace Road that were interviewed and discussed, and so we hope that the same consideration was given to those people on Ashton Road, because that speed hump does affect a number of houses on that road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure, Matt, do you want to address?
Thank you. I would just say that along with Chief Weck and our city engineer, Aaron Schreger, we have done extensive amount of work on this and we are very concerned about the safety of all our citizens. And I will add that when I walked door-to-door last year, the number one complaint that I heard from people everywhere was speeding and about people not feeling safe as pedestrians. And that's the main driver of this, is public safety. But I'm sure there's more to come.
I'm sure that through the safety committee, the request that you made for underlying data, you guys will figure it out and provide it and then have us sit down. Sure. Okay. Any other folks with public comments? Okay, with that, I'll consider the public comment section closed. Moving on, ordinances for hearing. So we have one ordinance for hearing tonight, which is Buildings and Grounds 18-3173. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance, to amend an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance granting permission to hold a private sale of a portion of the real property on block 3204, lot 7, located on 1,000 Summit Avenue in the city of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, to include the minimum price of the property."
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Council adopted the underlying ordinance on May 1st to allow the city of Summit to hold a private sale of a piece of property along Summit Avenue from the Summit First Aid Squad to Morris Avenue, extending approximately 175 feet. Because the property is only 14 feet wide, it's not used for any municipal purpose at this time. This current ordinance will amend the earlier ordinance to include the minimum purchase price of 40, of, of the property at sale as required by state law. The minimum purchase price of $40,000 is based on an appraisal performed by the city's appraiser. This ordinance was introduced on September 4th. I move to open the hearing for discussion.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please. Ordinance is a, ordinance is a-
Hearing, you're confusing me.
Sorry, okay, sorry. I thought this was introduction. Comments from folks? Anybody? Any comments from members of the public? Consider the hearing closed. Now moving on for ordinances for final consideration. 18-3173, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
An ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance granting permission to hold a private sale of a portion of the real property on block 3204, lot 7, located on 1,000 Summit Avenue in the city of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, to include the minimum price of the property."
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. We just had a hearing on the proposed ordinance, I would like to move this ordinance for passage.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next is an ordinance for introduction. The hearing date will be the next council meeting, October 2nd. It's Works 5888. Madam Clerk, would you please read it?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-14, Loading Zones.
Thank you, Council President. Basically what we're doing here is with safety and Works working together, we've identified eight loading zones throughout the city. This will assist in moving traffic as well, traffic, pedestrian as well as vehicular in a more efficient and safe manner. As I said, they are in the, in the eight loading zones off of Beechwood, DeForest, Park Avenue, Summit, Springfield, and Union Place. This ordinance will be heard at the next council meeting, 10-2. I move we introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay, and that will be heard in the next council meeting. Over a second. Okay, so now moving on to resolutions. We have General Services, Resolution 5909. Councilwoman Ogden, please.
Thank you, Council President and I do. This resolution is to authorize change orders numbers five through 12 for the community center renovation project in the amount of $133,598. I move this resolution in the series, but feel free to ask any questions for specific ch-
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay, and that will be heard in the next council meeting. Over a second. Okay, so now moving on to resolutions. We have General Services. Resolution 5909, Councilwoman Ogden, please.
Thank you, Council President and I do. This resolution is to authorize change orders numbers five through 12 for the Community Center renovation project in the amount of $133,598. I move this resolution in the series, but feel free to ask any questions for specific changes as a long way. If you should have them, all these changes, it's important to note, will be fully covered in incoming grants that are coming through community programs. So at this time, oh, and one other thing to be noted is that several of the changes that happen are having to do with JCPN L and policy change that we had no control over and could not anticipate. So at this time, I would like to move this ordinance, this, sorry, sorry, resolution, just making sure you're all right. This resolution to authorize these change orders. A second.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council or questions? Mike?
Yeah, just to clarify, I know we were getting grants for this, but if we didn't spend the money, we'd still have the grant, and we would be spending it on other things, right? So it's not like this is being a grant just to pay for overages, just so the community understands that.
Come on, Judith.
Thank you, Judith.
Actually, we've been able to secure some grant money through the Board of Public Utilities, where we've been very aggressive in putting in grant applications to help us with some of these electrical changes, which were sort of forced on us. So, yes, some of the grants might have even been in existence and used in another way, but we have been actively going after new money to be able to cover these. One of the biggest challenges with Community Development Block Grant, where we're getting most of the money and yet another cycle's coming in, is you have to first spend it in order to get it reimbursed. So you have to prove that you spent X number of dollars on that improvement. So we have been able to find new money, what I would call new money, to handle some of these electrical changes.
Great. Okay, thank you for that. And then the only other thing, I just was wondering why you're here, Judith.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Just to talk about a lot, a big chunk of this seems to be due to fill and the cost of removing it and replacing it, and it was due to rain. Could you just, what happened?
Yeah, well, you never know what is deep underneath the earth. And we uncovered, there were houses on that property. We were aware of two houses, but not of what they had dumped beneath those houses, deep in the ground. So once we started digging, there was ash, coal ash, and other things that had to be removed. And then there were calculations done by engineers that were, you know, on the project. And later, as they dug deeper, and there were other issues with the soil and the quality of the soil, that we had additional 300, what would have been $300,000 of transferring soil off the property, which we did not budget for. And that's why we came up with a solution, and I have to credit Jamie Clucci, the Assistant Director, with spreading that soil on the other side to create a larger plateau for a park. So that's one of the cases of making lemonade out of lemons. Here, we wound up with what could have been a potential change order before you tonight for $300,000 and many trucks to cart this excess soil off the property that we're going to be able to use there to create a larger park for the neighborhood adjacent to the community center. So that's a creative way to try to make up for some of these. Now, one of the things that I can't tell you exactly tonight is that once this building is dry, and we're very close, that means we start to move inside, and we start to do interiors. There still are some credits that we anticipate. We also have a couple of credits, and we don't have the exact amounts because these have to be negotiated. But for example, we kept certain trees instead of removing them, so there's some credits there. Some will be trimmed instead of being removed, and that's just an example of a credit. So as we go inside and we start to look at the real practical nature, once there's wood, once there's walls up, and we start to look at things, there could be some more credits. So some of this will balance out in the end. But we get it, we know what we need to do, and we've been very, very aggressive on chasing down these grants. We have one more round of Community Development Block Grant money that's coming up to be filed in December, and we have a lot of good indications that they should be helpful. So what we call, would be calling new money since the basic fundraising.
Right. And just to follow up, I know we have hired a grant writer. Have they been working with you, or have you guys been doing this on your own?
We've been, we've been doing most of it ourselves. We have been working with the grant group on the BPU applications, but I have to be completely frank. We spend so much time in giving them the information, and then they give it back to us, and then we have to correct it again and bring it back. No fault of theirs, but they need all the data from us. So by the time we do all that data, we might as well, in some cases, make the application ourselves. So we use them when it gets difficult. And then the ones like CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, I've been doing those for more than 30 years, those are pretty by rote. So we, we don't use their services for that. But for example, BPU, we've been asking her to, Nora Hatch we work with. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of grants out there for bricks and mortar-type things that we're doing, but we're searching for them. So doing our best.
Thank you, Judith.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine. Thank you, Judith.
All right.
Okay. Comments from members of the public? Any further discussion among members of council? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Now, we're on to Buildings and Grounds, 5887. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is to appoint Transfer Station Task Force members. Council created the task force by resolution on July 10th, and the task force is charged with identifying future potential uses of the 53-acre transfer station property. Pursuant to closed session and discussion, we have appointed five community members at large. They are Patricia Casson, Rob Friedrich, Christopher Harrison, Jack Hellings, and Adam Zucker. We also have three council members on the task force, and those are Councilmember Bowman, Councilmember Gould, and I'm also going to be serving on that task force. We have some liaisons as well. Department of Community Programs representative is Mark Osorowski. Department of Community Programs Advisory Board Liaison is Elaine Anderson. Department of Community Services representative is Rick Matias. Environmental Commission Liaison is Jeff Hankinson. Recycling Advisory Committee Liaison is Karen Rehoffer. I would like to thank all of the members who volunteered their time for this task force, and I move this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Works. We have four works.
Do you want to bundle those, bad boys?
Let's bundle them.
Yeah.
Councilman, Bowman.
Okay, so we have four resolutions this evening. All four are to approve to submit a grant application and to execute a grant contract with New Jersey Department of Transportation. The first resolution, Works, is Resolution 5897, and that is targeting the Village Green Pedestrian Safety Phase 1, or Phase 3, rather. This phase addresses bike storage on the north side, lighting, beautification, as well as pathway improvements. Basically, we're looking at the Navy portion, maybe Parkside, if you will. They're all being related to the Summit being a transit village and making the area around the train station more accessible for citizens and commuters. Resolution 5896, Works 2, is to, to grant, to cover road reconstruction and paving projects. And in this project, we're looking at New Providence area, New Providence Avenue, would cover storm and sewer upgrades, repaving, as well as curbing to assist in extending the life extendancy and efficiency of the first two. This would actually be the second priority for this grant, and because we can place two grant applications per year under this program. And that leads me into Resolution 5895, which is the primary area that we want to focus on, and that would be to cover Butler Parkway, which would be a storm and sewer upgrades, repaving, as well as curbing to assist in extending the life and efficiency. Butler Parkway connects Morris Avenue and River Road, and is well-traveled commuter to the Washington School, Tatlock Park, and the like. And the last portion of this is Resolution 5894, and this is another Summit Safe, or Station Safe Streets. We're only allowed to do once in the middle of a year, and this would be targeting sidewalks along Beechwood Bank and Beechwood Bank Street and pass connecting to Tier and Broad Street garages. Work would include sidewalks, lighting, road markings, ballards, and again, all with the intent of making our pedestrian experience much safer. I move we accept these resolutions. Thank you.
Second.
Any comments? I will say, looking at these grant applications, I really hope that we get them because I think all of the works that are described in each one of these grant applications are really necessary, and I think it's great that we submitted for all of them. So let's, let's cross our fingers and hopefully get them. Any comments from members of the public? Further discussion? Matt?
My question is, did we use the grant writing, you know, the grant writing consultant for this, the grant writer?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. Okay.
You, Council President, sure. We did use some services from our grant writer. A lot of the information and some of the background work was done through the Engineering Division, two gentlemen that provided those great presentations.
Right. But we, we found the grant writer to be helpful.
Yes.
And useful.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Finance, we have two on finance. Little, please.
Thank you, Council President. I will be bundling these two resolutions as well. These are Finance Resolutions 5922 and 5923. They each involve the extension of injury leave with and without pay for one DPW employee and extension of injury leave with pay for another DPW employee, and I ask that council approve these resolutions.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. We're up to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Time for a council member comments. Or, Mike?
Thank you, Council President. Just, I want to put in a plug. This coming Saturday is the Summit Public Art Gala at 1 to Forest Avenue. So if you, you can't miss what they do in Summit. You drive around, just those great pieces of art scattered throughout the city. They raise money for this. This is not funded by your taxpayer dollars. It's a group of very enthusiastic volunteers who love art, and, but these things cost money. So if you love the art, you know, please, if you're, if you're free on Saturday, you can come. It's, you can go to summitpublicart.com, I think. It's not a dot org, but they are a nonprofit. You can buy a ticket for it, or you can donate online. It's going to be a fun event.
Great, thank you. Anybody?
Yes, I'd like to make a plug for the Summit Free Market. Probably will come up in the next council meeting as well, but October 6th, Saturday, October 6th, and Saturday, October 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Summit, at the transfer station. And just wanted to give everyone advance notice so you can start your cleaning and organizing now. So we will be accepting garage sale quality items on both of those days, and it's a great event, and it benefits a lot of people in the community who, you can come and give away things you no longer need. You can come and find things that you need. There's always bikes and all kinds, you know, kids' toys and things like that. The main exclusions are no clothing is accepted.
Marjorie, I have a question. Do you know, we talked about it before at council, but do you know whether or not this time we'll be able to get a truck? I have a lot I could get rid of, but I, I need a truck.
Paul, do you want to take that one? Do you have a truck to lend Mary here?
We talked about a truck.
Come on up.
I'm passing that to you, Paul.
He's coming up. I thought he was saying he had to go talk to somebody.
Tough one to answer. So I guess your request is to have a truck pick up the larger items.
Right.
In coordination, obviously, with the free market.
Right.
I think that's a great idea, by the way.
Yeah, so I'd like to have that discussion in public works, and then we will definitely get back to you on that.
Yeah, because I, I think, I think you're right there. You know, the problem becomes is there's, there's people who have pieces of furniture, and they, they can't physically move it, and then yet, you know, it would be really helpful to the communities. I think it really is.
It'd be very similar to dial-a-truck request.
I know.
We would just need to, there would be two different avenues to bring those items.
Sure.
So we'll discuss it in public works, and then we'll get back to you, council.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Matt?
I just want to thank Chief Weck and the Police Department, and Chief Evers in the Fire Department for responding to that microburst so quickly. I know there's people without power. I know there was a lot of trees down, but I know they were on top of it, and Chief Evers, who'd normally be sitting here as well, is out dealing with that. So thank, thank you guys for that.
Beth?
I just heard from several residents that their power is back on, so I hope that that's true for everyone, and I hope this is the last of the power outages for a while. We've had a few here in Summit recently.
Mary, sorry, before, and then I'll finish with, oh, Nora, but she asked first.
She did, but she only spoke once. No. I spilled her ice, so she can go first.
Want to be fair here?
I, I'm really quick. I just wanted to announce that the library, the long-awaited sign, is up.